Okay, we'll get started. Good evening. I'm Jolene with the League of Women Voters. We'd like to thank the city of West Fargo for hosting us this evening for our candidate forums. For those of you who don't know, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to encourage understanding and public policy issues, influences public policy through education and advocacy. To start out, we'd like to invite Jim Brownlee, the administrator at West Fargo, to talk a little bit about a ballot initiative.
Thank you. Yes, on this year's June ballot, in addition to the candidates that are running for office, you're going to see a ballot measure for a sales tax. The city commission authorized putting this on the ballot, and the reason was that the city staff came to them in budget time last year and said, "We have about $120 million of core infrastructure that the city will have to put in for the next, over the next 20 years," and that the funding sources we looked at were, of course, special assessments, which we always do, or utility fees, or another option was to put a sales tax on that the people could have a chance to vote for, and if they passed a sales tax, it would lessen the amount of the special assessments that would have to go on, or the increase in utility fees. So, this June, this will be on the ballot. The thing is that the way our Home Rule Charter is, is that there'll be actually two questions on the ballot. And the first one is a proposed amendment to the city charter, the Home Rule Charter. And then you have to vote if you approve it, or if you're for it, you'd have to vote yes to amend the Home Rule Charter. And then the second question is an implementing ordinance that would actually, so the first question authorizes it, the second question, if you vote yes on it, would implement that change. So, just the way our Home Rule Charter is, you really need two votes, two questions, but it's one sales tax. It's not two sales taxes. It's one tax and just two questions on it. So, that is really about all I have to say on that. I just wanted to clarify that. On the ballot, you'll see two questions and not one.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Jim, is there a website address that people can go to to learn more about this?
Yes, if you go to thecityofwestfargo.org, you will see we have a whole series of questions and answers about the sales tax, and also have a list of the projects that are listed that account for that $120 million of core infrastructure that has to be put into the city of West Fargo. And again, these projects are core infrastructure projects such as water towers, core infrastructure lift stations, forest mains, its main arterial streets that have to be put in. These are not things that we just think would be nice to have. These are actual projects that we know the city will have to build over the next 20 years. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. For those of you just joining us, if you have a question for the candidates, there are white cards being passed out for you to write them on. This will be rebroadcast three times over the next week. So, we're gonna start now with the city commission candidates. We'll start with a two-minute opening, and then we'll rotate with questions with the next person starting each time. And we'll start with Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dwayne Hanson. I've, my wife and I, and my two young daughters moved to West Fargo in 1989. And believe it or not, it was growing back then, for those of you that have lived here, and it has continued to grow all that time. I've spent 11 years on the school board from 1990 to 2010. 2010, I ran for city commission, was fortunate enough to get elected, and over the last four years have enjoyed this experience as well. And I look forward, I thank you all for coming here tonight, and I thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on, because it's always a good forum for all of us to learn more about what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
My name is Brad Olson. I moved to West Fargo in 2006. We settled in the Eagle Run area, my wife and, at the time, a fourth grade daughter, and we have seen that area grow immensely since we've moved here. And prior to moving here, I had served on the Bowbells City Commission in northwest North Dakota for 12 years. I've been involved here through the high school and the STEM program, and I keep involved with the Hunter's Education. Been an instructor for 17 years, and I just have a passion for being involved with the city government and helping it grow. And I want to thank the League of City Voter, Women's Voters, too, for inviting me tonight and allowing me to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
All right. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, too, for hosting the event tonight and allowing me to participate in it. A little bit about myself, I moved to the community in 1998. My wife Nancy Polczynski was born and raised here. We have two kids. Our son Tyler is a freshman at North Dakota State University. Our daughter Janaya is a junior at West Fargo High School. And I'm currently employed at Red River Electric, we're electrical contracting firm based out of Moorhead. I've also had an interest in city government for quite a few years, and when Lou Bennett's term, when he left midterm and moved away from the city, I thought that was a perfect opportunity for me to start getting involved in the city. And I put my name in, went through the interview process, and in October of 2012, I got sworn in as replacement for Lou Bennett. It was quite an honor by the commission, the current commission, to be chosen for that seat. And I could tell you, I've learned quite a bit from that time. It's been a great learning experience. I just feel that, along with my leadership skills and the, my ability to work with people, great assets that I've helped bring to a strong city commission already. You know, we're a fortunate city with the pace we're growing at, and there's a lot of good things going on in the city of West Fargo. And also, I'd like to recognize the city employees. They're dedicated, hardworking, and they've also done a good job of taking care of the citizens and help us manage this growth properly.
All right, thank you. Our first question will go to Mr. Olson. Please talk about your vision for West Fargo as it continues to grow and expand.
My vision would be to keep the core areas growing, as in like Main Avenue, Cheyenne Street, 13th Avenue, keep those growing as they are. We don't want to lose any businesses there, but also concentrate heavily on Veterans Boulevard and south of I-94. That's where the major growth is. We need to keep focused on that area right now, because that is where all the activity is. We don't want to hand any businesses over to Fargo just across the street of veterans when we could get it in West Fargo and grow that way. I can see potential. I like to make, you know, when people say, "Where are you from?" Well, I say Fargo. Well, I'm not. I'm from West Fargo, but they don't know what West Fargo is. So, I want to be able to say, "I'm from West Fargo," rather than just saying from the Fargo area. So, that would be my vision, to make us the destination spot rather than the FM area.
All right, thank you.
I guess my vision for West Fargo, at the pace we're growing, we've got a lot of challenges, but at the same time, we need to look at getting more business. Like Brad said, on the Veterans Boulevard, it'd be nice to get Cheyenne redeveloped more with more businesses on our downtown. But within that, it's a lot of challenges of managing this infrastructure as it grows. And like Brad talked about earlier, we've got the challenges of the costs of all the infrastructure, whether it's in the older part of town or the newer part of town. There's many challenges we have to look at. So, the vision has to be broad. It has to be, we have to make sure we're encompassing the full picture, right down to what are we gonna look like when we fill out up to the Cheyenne diversion? What options do we have beyond that, and what can we explore?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
I think it's important for us to continue to try to do a good mix of business and residential, and especially as Brad said, down along, down along Veterans Boulevard, you know, there's only so much flood-protected land and only so much space that we've got in this community to do all those types of things. So, our vision is to try to keep doing what we're doing and to try to keep bringing that business, and I think you're seeing that already with a lot of business going in down there, new motels. Obviously, with Sanford across the street, that helps a lot, but with the Costco coming in, a big plus for us. We're gonna continue to have a lot of infrastructure needs, you guys, as time goes on with water, streets, things like that. We're, you're gonna be hearing a lot of things about what we're gonna be doing about our water quality and water supply over the near future. And obviously, like I said, flood protection is the name of the game. We've got that, but I think you'll see a lot more coming if the diversion actually comes through. So, a good working relationship between that, our neighbors to the east and pretty much all around us. I think you're gonna see West Fargo continue to thrive. It's amazing to me, in the years that I've lived here, how it's changed from 1989, when, you know, Charleswood was a wheat field, and I moved here and, you know, where Walmart, Sam's Glauze was, was a farmstead. So, great changes, good manageable type growth. And there again, we've had good, strong leadership out of our city, out of, out of the people that work here also to try to keep us on path, because it's not an easy job to run a city of this size. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question starts with Mr. Wentz. What is your position on the sales tax ballot measure? Will this have an impact, either negative or positive, on West Fargo businesses?
I support it. It, I think it's a good alternative funding source for our infrastructure needs. Like Jim said, $120 million over the next 20 years, and if we can generate this alternate source of roughly $3 million a year, I think that's a great benefit to the taxpayers of West Fargo. If, you know, if we can make it work, it's, like we've all said, there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of infrastructure that needs to be taken care of in this city. At the rate we're growing, I think we need to be looking at alternate sources such as this.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson.
Well, obviously, I'm in favor of it all. So, you know, as a, as a city, you know, there's only a certain number of places that we can get money from. Property taxes, sales taxes, you know, some money from the state, you know, a little bit of money from the federal government. So, we have options, as, you know, if we have infrastructure needs, and, you know, and we do, and we have needs that we need to, you know, supply people with streets, you know, decent water, things like that, that all costs money. So, where do we get that from? Sales tax is certainly a way to make that happen. We spread it out amongst everybody, including people even that don't live in this community, no different than what Fargo's doing and pretty much everybody else is doing across the state. Probably much better than special assessments and things like that. Those are still gonna be used and have to be used in the new developments. But the sales tax issue is just a way for us to raise money and use that money for those special types of needs.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I couldn't agree more with both of, what these gentlemen have said. I, too, support it. It's another way to raise revenue for all the people that use our facility, our streets, our restaurants, everything like that. We all need to pay our fair share, just like we do when we go to another, another city. And I think it would lessen the tax burden on our, on our residents in the long run.
All right, thank you. Back to Mr. Hanson. Are you open to sharing a water treatment plant and its expenses with Fargo? Why or why not?
I'm open to sharing anything with anybody as long as it's beneficial for the city of West Fargo. If, when we decide to do a water treatment plant, not if, but when, it'll make, you know, wherever we, wherever it works the best for everybody concerned. If it's a win-win for us, it's probably a win-win for Fargo or anybody else that wants to be involved. So, the answer to your question is yes. I would be open to doing that. There again, as long as it's beneficial for the city of West Fargo and it does not tie the hands of future commissioners or future commissions in the long term. When I say that, I mean, long-term contracts. You know you're gonna have that, but, you know, we may all get along now, but we all may not get along 20 years from now. So, we gotta be careful about what we do down the road to, you know, there again, tie the hands of future commissions and commissioners and get them into a position where we don't have any options. Options are good in life. So, there again, to answer your question for the third time, yes, I would, as long as it's beneficial for us.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I would support it. Like, again, like Dwayne said, if there are options that make it a viable working relationship for us. Don't want to be strong-armed into it. When I was around collecting signatures to get my name on the ballot, I found out there already is some, arrest Fargo residents that do get Fargo water already. So, I already came up with the idea that if they can do it, why can't the rest of us do it, too? But there has to be a long-term agreement worked out where we're equal partners in this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I agree, too. I think we have to support, explore all options that are out there. But at the same time, as Dwayne said, too, we cannot tie our hands to anything for future commission. It, just explore all our opportunities that are out there. But at the same time, we have to do what's right for the city of West Fargo and make sure that it's something that's gonna work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Are you in favor of plans to create a Renaissance Zone in downtown West Fargo?
Yes, I am. I've already got a couple of ideas. I don't know if it would fit the criteria of a Renaissance Zone, but I would like to, you know, even though we are the youngest city in the metro area, but based on incorporation, we have some old history here, too, and we'd like to maintain that. But I'd like to see somewhere along Cheyenne Street or even Main Avenue become some kind of a Renaissance area where it would be, like I said before, the destination spot in the metro area, a place that has the little niche stores, the dining areas, maybe even a boardwalk along the river somewhere to want to come here and, and just dwell in the, in the beauty that the city can provide.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I would have to agree with Brad. If, it would be nice to see any type of development in the downtown area, the destination area where people want to come. It, it just makes that community feel better, keep that small, small community feel, but also it's that destination area people, where people want to go.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
We've been doing a lot of positive things down on Cheyenne Street already. Some, you know, if you've driven up and down that street, you'll notice that there's some good things happening down there with some of the folks that have business down there already. So, the answer is yes. Of course, if we can provide tax incentives or any type of other incentives to get people to want to come to that area, develop that area, and make it something that, I know my wife would like that a lot if there was a lot of shops down there. So, I mean, it would, something to bring people into that area, absolutely. You bet.
Thank you. And starting with Mr. Wentz, what are your thoughts on the diversion project and its impact on West Fargo property owners and taxpayers?
With the Fargo diversion?
It says "The Diversion Project."
Okay. Well, number one with the diversion, if, you know, we gotta consider Fargo. There's a lot of us that commute to Fargo for work. A lot of our residents do, and a lot of our, we work in Fargo or, or have to cross the river, whatever it be, or Fargo residents may work in West Fargo. So, Cheyenne diversion has proved to be greatly helped us grow in West Fargo. So, most definitely Fargo needs something for protection. But as far as the taxpayers of West Fargo, you know, I would hope that anything that they would be asked to cover the cost of would be minimal. With the Cheyenne diversion already in place, we've, that's a proven protection for us, and we've paid for it. And I think that has to be, majority of your taxpayers of West Fargo are gonna be expecting not to be assessed very much for it. The benefit is, is, is great for the region, yes, and we need Fargo, we don't want to, we want to see Fargo with flood protection, but at the same time, it should have minimal cost to the citizens of West Fargo.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
I'm a big believer in flood protection, of course, of the metro area. I mean, I mean, that's just a given. There's just too many people live in this area, and there would be too much of an economic loss or something bad happen. With that said, I think it's unfortunate that we need to have the diversion to make that happen, but it is what we've got. And what Mark said also would echo that, is that, you know, we have our diversion, we paid for it. I don't believe the city of Fargo helped us pay for that. I would hope, you know, that the impact on the citizens of West Fargo would be minimal. I don't feel sure how much say we're gonna have over that, to be honest with you. Our city administrator actually sits on that committee, but I'm not sure when that's gonna come down or what that's gonna happen. I know that we will, as a commission, try to have as much impact on that as we possibly can, if we have any at all.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I support flood control, and I agree with Mark and Dwayne, where the West Fargo diversion and the Cheyenne diversion are working perfectly. So far, we haven't had any major failures or any at all that I know of. And the citizens here have paid for it. I probably wasn't here when it all went through, so I'm, I'm benefiting from all of that hard work that went in. And I drive over the diversion every day, twice a day, if not more than that, and I see it working every day, and it works great. I wish Fargo could have something similar to that. I don't know if it's worth the, the scope that it needs to be done and affect so many lives outside of Fargo for their protection. The land that they're gonna flood will no longer be able to be insured for crop insurance. You've taken the income away from all those people that survive on that, that make a living on that, and it's no longer considered insurable. And to benefit the few in Fargo, you're gonna affect it forever outside of Fargo. So, again, I hope we don't have to pay for a lot of it. If we do, I hope that the commission at that time, whenever it does get through, if it does get through, has a strong voice there that we won't have to foot a major part of the bill.
Thank you. And starting with Mr. Hanson, what is your most vexing problem in dealing with the North Dakota Legislature?
I don't know if we really have any problems dealing with the North Dakota Legislature. We're fortunate in this community to have a good relation, working relationship with pretty much all of our legislators. You know, we can get them on the phone, we can email them, they pay attention to what we're asking for. I mean, it's not a perfect world, so you don't get everything that you ask for. I mean, we all know that. But I mean, we, I don't have any vexing problems with them, and I guess don't. I mean, I've known most of them for a long time, and like I said, we think we all have a pretty good working relationship with them, you know, through the city, and, you know, as a commission, so, no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
By not sitting on the commission, I don't have any issues on that end of it, but I do know that the one, when I was on the parent advisory committee for the STEM program at the high school, we had two representatives come and meet with us to figure out how we, how they could help us move that program along and educate the rest of the state on that. So, I think they would, they're willing to listen. My current boss is a former legislature, and so, he's a great guy to work with, and I, just by having him around, I know that most of them would be willing to listen to us and work with us.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I would have to agree with Dwayne and Brad both. My short time on the commission this last year and a half, just the short experiences I've had, I've had with them. They care about the community. They're, they do what they can do for us, and I really can't say that, anything negative.
Thank you. Next question starts with Mr. Olson. How do you plan to pay for all the new roads with all the growth the city experiences? What if the sales tax gets voted down?
Well, if the sales tax gets voted down, well, if past history is anything, it took over, took three votes to get the school initiative through. So, a lot of education needs to be done in the short time by the city to explain why we need it. So, that would be my first thing, is if I was sitting on the commission right now, I would educate so it wouldn't fail. That would be my number-one priority. If it did fail, we'd have to look at changing, really prioritizing what's needed first, and then try again later, another, another year to get the sales tax increased up by that 1% and, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I would agree with Brad. If it failed, it would just come down to look at what projects prioritize, or prioritize the projects, and also, is there alternate funding we could come up with? You know, priority projects, you're still gonna want to keep the burden on the, keep the burden down to the taxpayers. And is there some other idea we can come up with to fund the projects?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
If we're, if we're talking about new roads and new developments, typically, they're not gonna be paid for with a sales tax issue anyways. They're gonna be paid for typically as they have been with special assessments. Not a, not a, not a big fan of special assessments, but there again, it is kind of the way we do business currently in this community. The answer to your question, though, if the sales tax fails, what would we do to type of, you know, why don't we just go back to square one and, and use whatever money we're getting to do whatever type of infrastructure needs we can do, and then, you know, there again, go back to the public with more education down the road, and hopefully we'd have a better outcome, you know, in the future.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Wentz, we just heard that Fargo is expanding the number of Class A liquor licenses. Do you foresee this in West Fargo, and do you want to see more liquor establishments?
I, first of all, I appreciate that our liquor licensing is a lot easier to work with. I don't know if I understand all of their licensing and how it all works exactly, but, you know, I guess one thing I really, in my short experience on the commission, any liquor license that goes through the approval process, I like the consideration that's taken. And even before they come to us for approval, I feel the police department has done a great job of sorting through and doing the background checks, whatever it be. You know, and is there, as far as number of establishments in the city, you know, it depends on where they want to go and the, what the area is zoned for, and if it's zoned for that, that's the right fit for the area. There's a lot of factors that have to be looked at. So, I guess that's all I have to say on it, but...
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
I agree with Mark, is that, you know, our liquor license situation is much simpler and a lot easier to deal with. As far as, you know, the number of, you know, establishments we have in town, you know, it's, it's a business, and it's, and the market kind of will demand what we can support. I don't think there's any right or wrong number in any of that type of thing. I mean, I grew up in a small town of Bowbells with 550, 550 people, so there was, you know, three bars and maybe almost four at one time before I left. So, you know, I mean, it's all what, what the market will, will demand. And if the market supports it, then, I mean, it's a business, and it should have an opportunity to run to second the other business.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I can't agree more with, with Mark and Dwayne. If, if the owner or the person that wants to start a business and it be in a liquor store or a bar, it's a, it's, they've made the decision to go that route, just like anything, to start in a hardware store. How many can you support in a, in a town? I don't think we need to limit them. Not being on the city commission, I don't know what the police department goes through to do all the background checks and things like that, but I'm assuming they do a great job at it. We've seen them spring up all over in, in, south of I-94. Some have made it, some have had hard times, but they're, they're good businessmen will prevail, and I don't want to stop that from happening.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Hanson, do the Cass County Fairgrounds enhance life in West Fargo, or do they hurt West Fargo?
Oh, I, I think currently they enhance life in West Fargo. That probably hasn't always been the case years ago, but, but I think currently with the type of management that they have out there at this time, and what, and the direction that they are going out there, and I know, know Brian Schultz pretty well, that it definitely enhances life in West Fargo. I mean, there are, there are folks that are not happy when we bring in the pyrotechnic people and stuff like that. There again, it's not the city of West Fargo, it's the Cass County Fairground, the Red River Fairgrounds is doing that, but I think for the most part, they're, they're a great asset to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
If West Fargo lost that area, it would, it wouldn't seem like summer. Every county has a county fair. I grew up south of Jamestown. You look forward to going to the county fair. And if we lost that, it would, and then move to another, or didn't even happen anywhere in Cass County, it would be a big void. And it's just one of those Americana things that we need to continue. And I support the use. It'd be great. You know, I'm not a stock car racer, but I hate to see that sitting empty out there because it... empty out there because there is so much potential to bring people into our area, and I wish that somebody could get that going.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I agree with both Brad and Dwayne, and, uh, it's, just like Brad said, I'd love to see the racing still going out there, but unfortunately, it didn't work out, and it, everything comes down to the financial part of it. But I do think that the group out there now has done a great job with the fairgrounds and what they're doing the last few years. Uh, the, I believe the attendance is up on the, on the fair. The, uh, the acts, I know they're getting a lot more entertainers, whatever it be, and, and more people going to it, which is great. And, yes, we, we need it. It's, it's something that is, we're used to in West Fargo, which should be here, and it's, it's, just look at, even, uh, when we do cruise night and what that's growing into. Um, West Fargo people come all over, from all over for that, those cruise nights, those four nights during the summer, and to the fair, it's the, it's the same thing. We need it.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Olson, the question asks, you are all agreeing with each other on all questions thus far. What do you do as far as getting your constituents' thoughts before voting on issues before you?
Could you repeat that one more time?
The, I'll read the last part.
Yeah.
Um, what do you do as far as getting your constituents' thoughts before voting on the issues that come before you?
I would just make sure that the people, um, in West Fargo know who I am, what I stand for, and, you know, I, I agree because we, we all have the same vision for this city, and I would make sure that, uh, um, I, I went around my, my neighborhood, and when I collected the, uh, ballot, or the names for the ballot, I proclaimed I would be the mouth from the south. Because right now, I'm the only candidate that lives south of I-94. And Eagle Run's been out there since 2003. Nobody from that area has sat on the commission that I know of. And I would love to represent that area of our city. It's a growing area. Um, things are happening daily down there. Um, I witnessed the, the traffic in and out, and if anybody's tried to get in and out of Eagle Run at 7:15 in the morning, Monday morning, it's nightmare. Or trying to get back out of there at 5:15 in the afternoon when everybody's coming home. We need better traffic control down there, and that's what I spoke about. I, I really didn't need to garner many ideas of what people wanted when I said I'm running for city commission, because they gave me so many ideas. Traffic flow, water, um, snow removal, park maintenance, all kinds of ideas. So, they helped me immensely, and I would just want to, um, continue their, their vision of, of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I, I think we all were agreeing with a lot of these issues because we're, we're here because we care about the city, and it's, so it's easy for us to have the same feelings, same thoughts on them. Um, the, the one thing in the, on being on the commission, I, I, the most important thing about the commission and the group that's on the commission is that they're willing to listen to each other and hear each other out to make sure we're putting the, uh, the city, number one, and not our personal objectives or personal goals. Uh, the list of items needed for the city is great. The, the stoplights, Cheyenne Street, that's not on the, on the, uh, projected until 2018, I believe. We could use that this year to, to widen Cheyenne and a lot of those areas. It's, it's just one of those things where the growth, and it didn't get, the funding's not there yet for it. So, everything has to be planned. But, uh, number one, the commission's got to be willing to hear each other out, work together. I don't think it's so ma, so much whether we live on the north or south side, and I don't want it to become that. It, it needs to come down that we work together, we work smart, and we do what's right for the citizens of West Fargo.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Surprisingly enough, you know, my phone, everybody, before we have a meeting, agenda's posted normally, oh, four or five days before that, sometimes, sometimes earlier than that on our website. My phone rings rarely, if ever, for questions or people that have, um, want to post their thoughts and those types of things, or how we're going to vote. As far as how do we vote and how do we do things like that, I mean, we, we do a lot of research prior to meetings. We'll talk with Jim if we've got questions about what's on the agenda, talk to other people where we can gather information so that when we come to that meeting, we, you know, we have a pretty good idea of what's going to be going on there. We don't always, and Mark will, will tell you this, we don't always agree as a commission, um, on, on things. Do we a lot of times vote together on that? Yes, we do, um, but not always. Um, but we have a good agree to disagree type of thing that goes on a lot of times because when you're on, serve on the commission, you don't always get your way. In fact, a lot of times, you don't get your way. I want to address just a little bit about what Brad said about, um, about, uh, down south. The reason we're elected at large, in my opinion, is, is that we don't have to serve a specific area, that everybody gets equal representation from west, no matter where you live, north, south, east, or west. I think it would be a mistake for the city to ever go to electing somebody specifically from a specific area because I think you start pinning different sides of the city against each other by doing that. I think that would be a mistake, especially in a city this size. This commission will go to bat for, for you, no matter who you are. I mean, we just went to bat for some folks, the last city commission meeting, that, uh, lived across the road from, or across the river from the Stockyards. Wasn't real popular with some of the people that, well, from business people out there, but we did that. Why? Because it was the right thing to do. Um, so, we gather information, we do our research, and we make the best decision that we possibly can based on that.
Thank you. Next question starts with Mr. Wentz. Do you think the West Fargo library facilities, how do you think the West Fargo library facilities compare favorably with, uh, Morehead and Fargo libraries?
I think the, uh, the, the West Fargo library's doing a great job. Um, it, it's, we've really grown there versus previous, you know, where we were. Um, if, if one area, it's, I hear a lot of positive comments about it. I, I hear from people I work with, even though I work in Morehead, that other people that live in West Fargo and work in Morehead, they talk about the great events they're taking their kids to there, the fun they're having. When you hear that, I, I feel they're doing a great job. And a lot of people probably don't realize how many activities there are going on there all the time. Um, it's just a matter of how do we get, get the word out and get people more active in it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Libraries are tough, you guys, because when you think of libraries, you know, back when I was a kid, thinking of libraries, thinking of books, they are so much more than books nowadays, okay? They are, they are a whole lot of other things. My daughter brings my grandkids over to the West Fargo library. She lives in Fargo. Um, can we, can we, can we have a better library? Can we be doing more things? Of course, but you can, no matter where you live. I think our library folks are doing a great job in the facility they've got, um, and hopefully it'll just continue to get better.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Um, I, I work in Fargo. I, I hear very little from the people I work with, but we all have, um, older kids that don't participate in, in the younger events like that. Uh, I, I must say that I, I don't frequent the library. I spend eight to nine hours a day reading at my job, and reading a book is the last thing I want to do. So, I don't frequent that, the library very often. Uh, so, I guess I'm, I'm a poor one to ask, uh, on that. I'm just going to be honest. I, I don't know how we could, uh, make it better, but, um, there's, there's always room for improvement, no matter, uh, whatever we're, we're trying to, uh, achieve.
Okay, thank you. Um, back to Mr. Hanson. As West Fargo grows in population, do you feel enough is being done to welcome diversity, for example, cultural and social, um, to our community?
I think that we, I think that we do a pretty good job of that. Can, you know, like anything else, it depends upon what's, if you're on the receiving end of that, or if you're, you know, on someplace else. Can you always do a better job of, of welcoming people to your community and showing what options are available and what kind of services are available, things like that? Of course. Um, I think you always have to strive, no matter what you do, um, in life, but especially in government, um, is to, you know, always try to do it a little bit better next year, or the next time you do that. You, you, like any bureaucracy, and governments are bureaucracies, is that you kind of get into a flow of things, you do the same things the whole time. Can we, can we always try to improve on that? Absolutely. Um, that's, that's what we do as a commission, is try to, you know, say that to our people all the time, is, just because we've always did it that way doesn't mean we need to continue to do it that way. So, we would always try to make things better, no matter what. In that situation, I'm sure we could always do better than that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I've worked for the federal government for thirty-one plus years, and we're always working to increase the diversity of, of our workforce, and I would welcome it in the, uh, in the city of West Fargo also. Um, like, like Dwayne said, we get narrow-minded. We do one thing, it works. We don't ever, we don't try to think outside the box and, uh, and do that because it's, it's easier to, to go that way. So, to, um, open ourselves up to, um, other ideas, other cultures, it would, would just greatly enhance our community. So, I, I would support increasing our efforts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I too think it's an, an area where we, we probably could increase our awareness and, and do more things. You know, at, at the same time, there is a lot going on in the city, and, and maybe it is one area that is overlooked. But, uh, you, there's, probably is areas of opportunity.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Olson, um, statement, we've heard a lot of agreement so far. Um, is there one issue that you differ, um, with the, differ on compared to the other candidates? If so, what is it?
I heard a statement about the, uh, the stoplights and traffic on Cheyenne Street. Um, and I realize that we probably, it isn't in the works until we can, um, widen the , uh, underpass on I-94 to make it actually work as it should do. But there are some minor little things that could be done to help, uh, residents in that area. Uh, on Fortyth Street, or Fortyth Avenue and Cheyenne Street, a protected left-hand turn would be greatly appreciated by the peoples of West, uh, of, uh, Westport Beach. They, they're, the lines are a mile long to get out of there at times. Until the Wilds was developed, their only access point out, in, in and out was to go on Fortyth. And they could sit there for twenty minutes and not move because there's someone wants to make a left-hand turn, and they can't because of the traffic going east and west. So, um, even though it's not budgeted for, um, traffic lights on Cheyenne Street, some left-hand turn lanes would be greatly appreciated by the folks that live down there. Um, I witnessed on the, uh, uh, coming off of I-94 on the Cheyenne Street just south of the intersection, there are phantom cars that, that, uh, appear in the left-hand turn lane to go onto I-94. They always get the protected green light, no matter if there's a car there or not, and the traffic that tries to go north sits there for two to three minutes while the southbound traffic keeps going. It isn't rocket science to see those. And little things like that could be done quickly, and the people would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
I, I think probably the, the question was the issues we very honor. Any comment?
Would there be? Yes.
Just probably, you know, the comment about the south side, north side. I have to go back. I, the last thing I want to see is every, is ever have the city of West Fargo broken down into, um, areas or zones and, and represented from each area of the city because I think it's important we look at the whole city and, and not look at just one specific area. Um, I'm not disagreeing with Brad on the opportunities. On Fortyth Avenue, I've sat there myself, even though I don't live down there. It, it is an area of opportunity, but we have other areas throughout the city too that are in similar situations. So, um, those are issues we need to deal with as we go forward, but, uh, most importantly, I, I just believe that we need to represent the city as a whole and, and never break it down into, uh, districts.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
That's a tough one, but I guess I pretty much agree with both of these guys and all those issues. And Brad, if we got things going on down there, we can try to, the, the stoplight thing, uh, on the interstates are controlled normally by DOT, and so that's kind of an issue. Um, but we can work with them, and they have been able to work with us, especially on the, on the Veterans Boulevard stuff. But, um, one of the things I've learned about their being on boards all these years is that you, even though you may not agree with what your cohort is doing, um, if you can walk away from that at the evening and still respect each other, that's what it's kind of all about. And we've, and we're doing that on the city commission as we speak today, and we've learned to do that, um, through the years. And that, that just takes time, uh, getting to know each other, getting to know each, how each other thinks, how you feel about certain things. There again, we don't always agree, and a lot of times, people don't even know that we don't always agree, but that's okay. All right? So, the ideal idea is have respect for each other and try to make the best decisions we can for the citizens of West Fargo. That's what we're here for.
Thank you. We are about out of time, so I think, starting with Mr. Wentz, if you each want to give a one-minute closing, anything else you would like to, um, kind of finish up with?
I, I really don't have much to finish up with. I think we had a, a good wide range of questions, um, even though we may have answered them all similar, you know, in similar fashion. Um, but they were good questions, and it, it's a good thing too that we all aren't, that we're not sitting up here disagreeing. I think it's, uh, it's, it's good that we are agreeing. It means it's, it's a po, to me, it's a positive thing. Uh, the city's got a lot of good things to look forward to the next four years and beyond. So, it's, I, I guess that's all I'm going to end with, and thank, thank the legal women voters once again for having this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. And, and there again, thank the legal women voter for putting this on. These forums are always, um, always very good. Great questions, by the way, from everybody out there. Um, I would, uh, just ask that I would, you know, I've really enjoyed my time on the city commission, and I would, uh, hope that, um, we can do another four years, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Well, when I came here, I didn't want to bring up the fact I'm from south of Ninety-four. It, it slipped out. But, uh, and I too don't want that be, ever to become the, the issue. Um, I just received a lot of positive, uh, comments from the people south of I-94 that someone was willing to, to put their name in the hat. And, and I decided it was time for somebody to do that. So, that's the main reason I'm, I'm doing it, because I have the passion to serve, and I've done it for thirty-one years as a several, as a civil employee, civil servant, and, uh, like to continue that at, on the city of, uh, West Fargo's commission.
Thank you. Thanks to the audience for all of your great questions, and a round of applause for the candidates. We will take a quick five-minute break and then, um, be back with the school board candidates. Thank you.